Alan Burke. Matt Clapp, I was Katz. Steve Mitten, Thomas Doherty. Jason Burrow is joining us and I'm Jim Sherry. Any announcements or any? The only announcement I wanted to make was just to include because it wasn't on the meeting minutes. Was just to take note of the development that's happening on Dean Street. It was that lot that we had approved as a single home. It's a, it's a very nicely scaled, appropriate sighting on, on the property. They have a rendering hanging out front on a banner. So if anybody's walking or biking down Dean Street, you're on the 200 block. It really looks nice. Any citizen comments on items on?
I just had one other comment. I just want to recognize Thomas for the incredible presentation he made to Borough Council. It was extremely well done and very well received. We're grateful to Borough Council for their openness to
Think so.
revolutionary concepts. Just want to congratulate him on.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Outstanding.
And Matt, your, the PC over here was also presented very well by Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Got the coverage.
Now you realize though, Borough Council can jump against this for you guys to get pen and paper on.
Oh, sure. We can't get there fast enough. We're on it.
They're on it.
We're going to make a motion today and pass it.
No, but next, next month we're going to have something.
Okay. Any citizen comments on items not on the agenda? Let's join. I'm afraid that we're back in the selection process and so that has not been determined yet. It's still, the interim is still Ramsey until we hear otherwise. Okay.
Any reports?
And old business, approval of April meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the April meeting minutes? I move we get, oh. Okay. All right. I move that we accept those minutes. Favor.
I'm staying. I wasn't here.
Fair enough. Thanks, Alan. Okay. Chester County Planning Commission response to the Harb, they did submit a review letter. That is moving forward through Borough Council's public hearing.
This is the works of the agenda. We already talked. I don't need to be done.
So.
Yeah, it might not. It was on the last, it was on the working session we were talking.
All right. So meetings approved discussion. These are just the old ordinances that we're working on, which includes the build to ordinance and the rec, fee and lieu. Those two are still being worked on. So we don't have anything on for tonight. The preservation ordinance is the one basically, Thomas.
We'll have something next month to discuss. Yeah.
Fantastic. For the work session next month. So that presentation was made to Borough Council last, last week. So if anybody wants to check out the video of that voting session, there was a nice 45 minute presentation on the preservation ordinance and it's something that the planning commission is working towards creating an ordinance. In essence, an overlay ordinance to the bulk of the borough to allow for a smaller, less restrictive development to take place. Presently within the zoning districts, there's a couple areas that we have an overlay district to allow for additional height that are in a height overlay districts, which are 60, 75 feet type of heights. This is going to actually allow a less restrictive relative to impervious coverage, relative to lot width, that types of things. Okay. New business. 401 West Washington Street. How are you?
Good.
Alan, well, thank you.
So I know we were here last Monday. Do we know if we ever got any direction from the zoning officer on the continuance of the existing nonconformity?
I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything else of that. I know Steve was looking into having that answered as well as the additional right of way that the future taking possibly. Is it something we can move forward without having that answer?
I'm sorry, we did get an update on that. I, I have it. Can I, can I share that with you?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, there's a new.
Yes, I'll make sure.
Yeah, on the 23rd.
Just the one condition. Lot two revised from 71,850 to 71,505. I wasn't quite sure. I didn't read it enough to get where that was coming from, but.
Yeah, it's just.
I think in the table, the square footage wasn't reflected.
Oh, okay.
So they added the line, they moved the line to include the foot of.
Correct. Yeah, there was that. Yeah, one little adjustment. So now we're technically reducing the overall impervious on the apartments by point one percent. So we are reducing it rather than.
So, so the one note is the zoning requirements for proposed lot two are revised from 71,850 square feet to 71,505 square feet. But I know that's just like a, a note that needs to be updated from there.
Where was it at?
So it was 71,850.
Lot two.
I think it was copied on that.
I think I'm copying.
Yeah.
Yeah, 71,850 is the proposed number now. Correct.
Okay. And I believe the zoning officer was asking for that to be.
71,505.
It went up from 71,505, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's what got revised. There should be a rev two in these middles that have those changes. I just admitted them. Would have been last week. Instead of when. I know I sent it to Ramsey and Mike Barbade.
Well, yeah.
Wait, wait, hold on. What did you say that it was?
It should say rev two on it.
See, grab one more.
Yeah.
So maybe we could make a motion and cite this letter?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's fine. Basically, it was just like a.
Yeah, they approved, it was approved by the zoning officer. The one condition that the square footage be updated.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think we can do it.
Yeah, I did have a question.
And I do have the revised plan here with me, so I wanted to look at it.
And I think the who drove the decision to relocate the property? Is it the apartments or the Elks?
It was the Yeah, the Elks home.
Okay.
Would have been the one that drove it because right now that area of the driveway was on their property. So liability purposes. Anything happens, you know what I mean? They're tied into it. So they don't ever use it. It's 100% for the terrace. So they were just trying to clear up basically that title and liability issue.
Sure. Do you know how it happened or what order it happened?
I'm not sure what sparked it now, rather than obviously back when they did the original sub development back in. Yeah, it was 1969, obviously that long ago. So I'm not sure of what progressed into the situation that it is now. Obviously over 50 years, a lot can happen. Some people may have, you know, added, you know, parking where it wasn't before, and now they're left with that situation, just trying to clear it up.
So Thomas, you feel as though we had a letter from the zoning officer?
We do, and I just forwarded Jim. Basically, it says we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
On both of them, the official map issue.
He did not weigh in on the official map issue. He just weighed in on the overall square footage.
I mean, my impression from top.
Correcting to a still not meeting, you know, the ordinance.
Basically perpetuating that non.
Yeah. Is that, that they, they're approving that?
Let me go ahead.
After review of the plan with the second revision, the plan has zoning approval with one condition. The zoning requirements for proposed lot two are revised from 71,850 square feet to 71,505. So the table on page one of the plan.
They're just changing those numbers, but they're not, the heart of the issue is.
I, I understand, but I'm just telling you what Yerkes's letter says.
Yeah. I, I did read that. I don't think it answers the question. I think both of those questions are still out there.
I thought Tom Estee last week answered the question regarding the official map and that was this doesn't close the issue. It remains open if they redevelop it, if they change the use.
Yeah, I think the official map question is more one of just being sure that Borough officials are aware of the fact that this is being adjusted and.
Yeah, there's a chance.
I think they are, they are not less concerned with that than I am. And one other question. Can you revise nonconforming to other nonconforming? It's still having.
It was, it's 75.
I mean, yeah, I think 71. To me, the zoning, the letter from the zoning officer says it's okay, but that's his. One man.
I mean, it seems like it's going to make sense for these citizens of the borough. It's going to clean up a liability issue and it's not going to make the problem worse. So overall, it seems like a moving the ball in the right direction.
I think it makes sense. I think it makes sense relative to what's there. I was trying to understand what's the property line there first, then it was paid over.
Sure.
I mean, I'm not sure. So when you look at it in around the seventies, that's when it.
About 75 ago.
71 also there.
Yeah. Yeah. The plan was 69. So it probably took a few years to get.
So 71.
You can see there's a part of that.
Yeah.
On the left side. So they've probably always been using it.
Okay, but it makes sense. I agree with you about my liability standpoint. Okay. Other than the official map and the impervious coverage, I don't know. Is there any other issues, Alan?
Those are the two that I had.
Jason?
I, that should make sense to me.
No comment.
Alan's?
I mean, I think that the only thing that might be the case is that our zoning consultant is perhaps. I just, I, I'm, is he, is he correct with his numbers, Matt? I mean, he's asking that the lot two number go down in square footage. I'm not sure which table.
I'd have to look.
I think like it's in his port, but I'm wondering if he got the lots mixed.
I was just, yeah, I'm almost wondering. Then you'd almost lose that.
Right, exactly. So either way.
I mean, I think our motions would just be resolving that comment. We don't need to.
I'm pretty sure you have a very good handle.
I think you got it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Satisfactory to him.
Yeah, fine.
I guess like, oh, good.
I was going to say, and for the existing nonconformity issue, would that potentially go to the council to make the final decision upon that?
I think it's the zoning officer.
Or he will. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll move to recommend approval of the draft plan with one condition resolving the file comment from the zoning officer.
I'll second that.
Okay, second Jim, second.
Any comments, any questions?
Obviously, residents around there are concerned that this is a premature development.
Sure.
We got all the calls, trust me. When we sent out the notifications, what's, what's people up there? We're like, nothing. It just changed the lot line. So what did I put in there? Nothing. It's just a lot. So all those calls, and it's funny, most of them were from like New Hampshire or they were all rental units that were calling and I'm, I was surprised that they were the ones that were most concerned with what's going on, not the ones actually living there, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And I would have the same concern you did about the making sure that we still lose that potential right of.
Sure. We just had their first run of refusal for that right away. And if it happens that way, we're connects through, it's going to probably require that piece of land to be annexed.
Yeah, because here's the street and then there's even the part of the building there that would have to be, you know, demoed to make it or realigned. Exactly. If they were looking into that, yeah.
And if it's, if it's that parcel that's being developed, that's just going to be part of the, yeah.
You know, you're going to go back through land development and subdivision, so.
So I don't think so. From a public standpoint, nothing's really happening other than right, cleaning up some liability.
Yeah.
Point, the one that there's not a.
Well, if anything were to happen on that corner of the property, it doesn't matter if somebody slips and falls or a car accident or something like that. It's, it's about who, who's covering what for the insurance and the, any exposure that's happening.
The Elks home would be brought into a lawsuit if somebody slipped and fall, say due to ice on the terrace. You know, driveway, which is part of the property, so.
So the terrace is the.
Apartments, yes.
When they care like.
Yeah, this little access parking up against it. I think they have some trash enclosures over there, possibly so.
Okay. And so, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's basically follows the edge of the existing pavement. So that's why we're looking to see how long that's been there and it's been there for 55 years or so.
Yeah.
So.
And so makes great reserves. It's like, yeah.
So. Any other questions? Okay. I guess we'll vote on that.
Oh, I'm a no.
I don't, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I'm saying just because I'm new to this topic.
Yes, but I do think it would be valuable to have a note in there reminding Borough Council of this official map, you know, right of way that's being proposed on there to bring awareness to that.
Absolutely.
We'll put that, so. And I guess.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Our favorite, 210, 214 West Washington Street.
The bottom is great.
I love it. It's great. Nice to see you.
See you.
Oh, I got to watch the, the video version of it. Phil's recording everything soon.
Well, back with the same as last week. You guys are going to do some things and you had, I emailed over the color rendering, which we came with last week. So I'm here to answer questions and get your feedback on that.
Okay.
And hopefully leave with a recommendation for approval.
Sure. Well, I think first of all, again, thanks for your investment in, in the borough. We do appreciate it. We do appreciate you considering all of the comments and, and making notable adjustments within that, in that design, both of, of the site and the building. So much appreciated. I think there were still a couple items that need to be tied down. Of course, we have all of our consultants' review letters and any open or comments that just need to make sure we're addressing the waivers, of course. We have lighting, that lighting issue that needs to be.
Yeah.
Looked out.
Yeah.
And I think, I mean, overall, trying to improve the quality aspect of lighting in the borough. There are lights there, but I think trying to get those overall warmer and maybe a little less harsh is going to have to be something that, I'm not sure how, how that gets addressed. I saw it in a couple of review letters. And what the final, what the borough's final decision is going to be is whether they're going to be able to remove those lights so that you're installing new ones or whether we're.
Yeah, that's kind of our question as well.
Sure, sure. That, I think that needs to be kind of. Does anybody know about how that gets? How that gets done? Or Thomas, do you have an opinion on?
I, I, it, it seems like we could, we could suggest something here. I mean, I would have to go back to the Saldau that did it a week ago when we were here. I can't remember what that dimension was, but I think what, if you were to put one in the center of your lot, would that give you that adequate spacing? It's like every 40 feet or something.
45 or 45.
So let's say it's, let's say it's 45 feet and then maybe, maybe the minimum, maybe what could happen is, you know, you put one in a, in a, in a nice place, kind of centered in the project and maybe there's room to do it on either side. And if the applicant or, you know, if you, the developer were open to that, then it seems like then it's on the borough to then pull down our lights. We, I mean, the existing situation is that we have ugly lights there. So it's, you know, the, the Saldau requires these lights in part for lighting of the public way, but also in an attempt to slowly, you know, improve the streetscape. And so it does seem like it would be a missed opportunity to not add those. And I do think that given the dimensions of the lot, it could be as few as, you know, one on one side, one on the other, you know, one on Patton Alley and one on, on Washington. And then that would follow the, the spacing requirements of the Saldau. But obviously that's extra, you know, cost and might be a debate, but that would, that was my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I think might the developers open to something like that. Great. Yeah, that was my, my question was just, you know.
Well, and I think from the PC standpoint, what we can do is make the recommendations. If that's something we all agree on, we can add that in the motion and let Borough Council discuss it.
And it might, it might even just take it off the table, right? Like it's not even an issue. If you add that center, center, you've checked the Saldau box for good, right? Like I don't even know if it would enter into a motion at that point, except for maybe like having to change that note on there or something. Right?
Yeah, but if we want approval tonight, the plans don't include it. So, I mean.
Just add it on as a, what's going to happen.
Right. Well, it's, it's a comment, satisfy the comment.
Right, resolving the comments. Yeah, we, yeah.
Sure.
I guess I'd want to.
I think Tom committed this mention last week. If we don't, we have to ask for waiver, which we have not done yet.
Right. So I, I think resolving consultant comments is, we include that on almost all our approvals or recommendations for approval. So for me, since this is the specific issue that we've discussed and we want to see addressed, I would call that out in the motion so that they can see that that's something we also agree that needs to be resolved, whether it's a waiver or installed in the streetlights. I think it behooves us to highlight that issue for Borough Council discussion and not just resolving like stormwater and other things that we talk about. Same with the curb issue, so.
So I have, I still have issue and it's, it will be part of comments is the radius that's on between the aisles. So point to that, that corner. Again, I. Yes. So if, if, if I look at that radius again, what I'm, what I'm asking for, what I've asked for previously is to reduce that 25 foot radius to a 10 foot radius, which would bring the, you know, points of the parallel or street lines basically to the corner of that building and it would provide a significantly greater area between the building and the curb. Right now, if we measure from the building corner to the base of the curb is three feet. So it does multiple things that I don't like. We're trying to, and the comp plan calls for more of a pedestrian, a bicycle, a family. So the kids with, parents with strollers or dog walking or anybody trying to come on that corner, let alone the individual that lives in that building, that when they step off that bottom step only has four feet by feet before they're hitting a roadway. A curve, that radius, just kind of again, one of those leftover oversized radiuses laid onto a block that quite frankly, it's 90 degrees in all the other corners on the block. So I think this used to be a building holding that corner. I do understand that in, in the event that the firefighting equipment cannot fight from Patton or Washington and may want to make that. But my recommendation there is just a manageable curb. So the ability for a vehicle to make a wider turn up and over the curb would still exist. So I think we need to just find ways to address or resolve these things, but being a lot more aware and sympathetic to the historic scale and nature of these blocks. And I think this takes it way out of scale and actually would actually encourage greater speeds around that corner. It doesn't, does not slow it. There's things that are traffic calming, cobblestones or tighter radiuses or sometimes traffic, that kind of stuff. It does would improve it. So I'm still, I still it's going to, as a condition, put onto it that that 25 foot is reduced to 10 foot with a manageable curb.
If I could just also add on to there, I mean, our hoses have 150 foot hole length. So from Washington and Patton, they can reach all the extents of the exterior of these buildings and these buildings don't require apparatus. So or, or as I, Ali really shouldn't need to have a fire. I municipalities across the country kind of have their buyer departments often make a lot of decisions outside of the elected officials. And I, and I think we don't want that happening in West Chester.
Right.
So can you have a meeting with Fire Marshal?
Well, I think we'd be a note.
It'll be, it'll be a note.
Like how, how should we handle that?
Well, in the same way. In the same way as.
I'm totally down with what you're.
Well, mine is, I'm going to say is ourselves, the planner, Tom committed, also supports the idea. We just made a presentation to Borough Council last week with the idea of understanding that there have been a lot of adopting of, of zoning that may may come in as maybe a little more consistent with some of the suburban treatments in a, in a different scale and age neighborhoods. So I think the idea of what's, what's right or wrong or what takes priority from us, it's, it's a more of a preservation of scale of the historic nature and, and the quality of the neighborhoods and buildings. And the comp plan calls specifically for, if we were prioritizing things, pedestrians is, is number one. So it's, it's the pedestrians' ability to get in and around those corners and remains safely up on the, off, off of the roadway onto the, on the yard. It does multiple things. It increases the amount of green. It decreases the amount of ownership of the borough. The borough doesn't need the additional land there. So I think it's certainly going to be suitable. We've heard comments previously, and I mean, if you look at things just with blinders on in a very narrow way, I can certainly appreciate the radius and that ease for which a fire truck may, may make it. But also we've had comments out, we don't want street trees. They get in the way of the ladders. We don't want mulch. It catches fire. So these are things that, as much as we can appreciate them as sincere, well-intentioned comments, they're inconsistent with other goals. All right. And we have obligation here relative to the borough to continue caring for and reinforcing, again, a better quality than that. I don't just want to pave across the corner because one time, maybe in the next 150 years, somebody with a truck's not going to be able to maneuver. That, that block, the size, just like Thomas said, if, if you're asked the firemen if where they're fighting, are they choosing to fight it from? Is that Birds' Ave?
Yeah.
No. Are they choosing to fight it off of Washington? I'd pull it off of Washington. I'd pull it off of Patton. And, and there's no reason other than to really endanger even the vehicles and the firemen to get closer. It's about, it's about getting access. Again, these buildings. You know, I think, well, I said basically that much of it, but I, I think the, it's just going to remain there.
It's up to Borough Council.
I see, I see the letter written to Sean. I don't see it to a fire marshal. So I don't know specifically who it is. And I, I don't know. They have not attended or written, we don't have a review letter from the fire marshal.
It's written as like showers and musts, but that's, that's that kind of.
We had two different reviews from two different fire marshals.
Right. Yeah. So I'm sorry about the, any confusion. Our, ours is, we can only make one clear direction.
Yeah.
And ours is just a recommending body and, and there is some exposure and liability. If I'm the borough, I don't want it. So to me, I'm pulling that back and understanding perfectly well. It addresses and solves it just as much as anything else. I went around the borough. You can look on, even if you don't want to walk literally, you can go on Google, you can start measuring radiuses. You can go to the biggest radius. I went around the borough. You can look on uh, even if you don't want to walk uh, literally, you can go on uh, Google, you can start measuring radiuses. You can go to the biggest radius you can find. It's fifteen feet. All of a sudden, this one's twenty five feet, but go to high, high end uh, market, it's fifteen feet. So to me, as you go down to the ends of these alleys, what, what is it? Darlington and New, uh, they're ninety degrees. So you, you'd have to get all the way into this location to all of a sudden have a, a sweep that just is, it's unfortunate because. We put that curb in, it's not going away from it. No one's ever coming back and removing that. Uh, the, all the dedication and that property, everything that has to happen. So mine is, uh, I think uh, presently it's ninety degrees tight. I think we move it to ten, ten feet, which is more than adequate. Uh, with a manageable curb.
Yeah, just leave it no tree there, so.
Right. And if, if, if you want to put a brick, brick out there and bring it down as almost um, a, a. Uh, almost like a corner for a crosswalk to treat it that way. So it's identified, but I think that will help slow vehicles around that corner. I think the person that buys that place will appreciate it.
What do you think about, I mean, we're currently proposing. Uh, ten inches of Belgium block on the valley border across all Patton. We just continued that all the way through that radius.
Mm hmm. And if you, it could be lower. I mean, you could put Belgium black flush, so.
That's, that's what we're proposing.
Okay.
Because the.
Then that's very mounted.
Says. Yeah, very mounted.
So my only, my only thought would be is if, if they wanted a harder surface behind it that would still. Uh, exist in that corner, see where that sidewalk goes, maybe bring some of that hard materials out a little bit to uh, to help. Understand that there's, in reality, there's still a twenty foot, there's still a twenty five foot turning radius there. It's just up and over and I think a much better solution.
Do you have a detail of the curb on the corner?
Yeah, I mean, yes, in the detailed construction detail sheet. Uh. It's on there.
Is that like your typical?
That's a regular curb. Yeah, um. It's down in bottom center of the.
Right there. Perfect.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's very amenable.
I love it.
I mean, that's beyond that.
Um, the one, the one thing to note is that the, the borough wouldn't be taking. The property line doesn't change.
Correct.
No, but from a maintenance, use asphalt, street sweeping, it does.
Yeah.
For a hundred years, like I said.
Hmm.
But I mean, yeah, I mean, it would. You guys are right. I mean, it should come out tighter. But there's not really a curb there, which is interesting. It should come out tighter.
I'm on board with you guys. Yeah, we're just, sure. We just want to follow uh, comments and make everyone happy.
I get it. So I, I think um. Well, I think uh, you're on board, we're on board. Does anybody have comments about that specifically?
Well, I, I appreciate you bringing that up and being a sort of yapping dog on this because I think you're absolutely right and um. It's, if you take a look at the larger picture, you know, what, what's happening is we're, we're taking away. Fire hazards, there's an automotive repair shop there and two hundred and twenty five year old buildings. It's a, it's to go up uh. In a second and we're replacing it with something. I mean, this is gonna be the last thing in the whole neighborhood to burn if there's a, if there's a big problem. So I just really feel like um. We do have to have, that's the reason that we, that's our purpose is to put logic behind this and. This would not be the very first time that we ignored. The uh, suggestions of the fire department. I think of many other examples where we've done that. You know, it's hasn't been a problem.
I think a very good point that you made is that. These trucks are still gonna be able to turn over the curb. God forbid something happens and there's needed to be a fire truck. They can go right over that curb. With this radius and that's what we kind of have to remember that the idea is that there will be no fires, but if there is, they can still.
Though, though I would want to just point out too, because it's, it's really important because they're asking for that, but if you could zoom out just for a second. You know, the code requirement would be that we have a hundred fifty foot hoses. A lot of municipalities now have three hundreds. But with a hundred and fifty, you can pull from here, from here, from here, from here and meet those standards. So already I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident that they're asking above and beyond. So it shouldn't ever even have to make that turn, right? So he's saying, I want to turn down there. But actually from a firegood point of view, you're already meeting, even if there were wards in alley, right? If that was just continuous buildings, it would still be meeting fire. And that's that kind of like, you have to be careful when. You see a lot of consultants from buyers and other municipalities because they'll ask for these things and more than what you actually need. You end up with a lot of extra asphalt and cost.
Okay. Alan, any other comments?
Well, I just wondered, I thought at the, the last meeting where we saw the first color um. Elevation of the design. There were some. Architect on the. Commission who offered to.
I, I do have, I do have a couple sketches for, I mean, obviously zoning doesn't cover façades, but I do have a couple sketches and I'm grateful, you know, that their willingness. So. When we get to elevation, I do have a little bit to share.
Okay.
Anybody else on the radius? We're good.
Oh, I'm interested. Question. If the other curb angles from the rest of the block are ninety degrees tight and we're, and the curb is going to be flat mounted. Why not keep it optically the same as all the other curbs and instead of a ten radius, just make it also a ninety? If it's countable, then they can drive over it anyway.
That's a great question.
It's, it's a fair enough. Yeah, I mean, I actually didn't have a problem with the small radius only from uh. Uh, just to ease any of the residents that are in that new development if they wanted to come out and make that left.
But it's a great point. He's talking about including like these patterns. Why go to the tenants accountable?
Yeah.
There's no functional difference.
Right.
It would be optically identical to the radius.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I just want to make sure we're not losing, moving in this direction. We're not losing any of the. Because yes, right now it goes right, the building, it's horrible popping out of there. It's very dangerous.
Well.
Going up bird's eye onto Patton. You can't see anything until you're way in the middle of it.
Sure.
So, but we're not changing that, the building.
No, that doesn't change. Yeah, and actually, actually, actually it's uh, it's, yeah, it's improved. The building steps well back. So with the building is back uh.
Right, that's what I mean.
An easy ten by ten, whatever the hypotenuse is there. But the uh, I would say uh, where the issues are, are uh, where the conditions are worst. Is actually probably getting on to Washington from bird's eye and that's an existing house. So it, most of the uh, buildings in the borough that exists are up to their property last presently. Uh, and it's well in front of those clear sight triangles. So.
Yeah, I, I know, but. I think it's, it's a happy medium. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying for this property right there, but just because we've always done it that way. Doesn't mean you can't improve it moving forward.
So you're not saying, you're saying improve, and I think that we would want to question that and actually dig into that because there are a lot of studies that would say. It makes you nervous when you're driving. It makes you nervous doing these things. You're gonna say, yeah, but I almost got hit. There are a lot of like, we have, I have an intersection in front of my house where we have a wreck. Probably once a month there and it meets our sidelines. Sometimes when it actually comes down and doesn't, you're more cautious. You're like, that's a terrible intersection and actually from lots of studies. I'm, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have this debate, but I just know that there's another side to it that would look at these and say, actually, those might be safer for pedestrians. Right? So it, it would be something that we should, I think, at least have a debate about.
Yes, but Washington is one way for heading from the west to, towards the east. And so really it's the existing building that's obstructing.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the other.
Mm hmm. And that's been improved.
Yeah, I just want to be sure we don't lose sight of.
Sure.
Since we're creeping everything and I, I, I agree with you as far as the turning radius, as long as the sight lines are there.
Yeah, the building right now is here.
Right.
And the new building is gonna be here and the curb is, doesn't really have any relative part of that, so. I think it's all fine.
Take ninety?
Yeah, I mean, that's why I asked for, for the detail. There's not really any curb, so to speak. It's just literally a surface difference. That you can go all the way out to the, to the edge, like you kind of said, take this sidewalk out.
Mm hmm.
There's no. You know, maybe ra- raise that up a little bit. You could go all the way out to the corner and people could still take the turn, you know? If they had to. I mean, your, your. Um. Radius examples are super helpful because they. If they're true.
I think I drove a car out.
Yeah, page thirteen was the cars in every option and it's pretty clear that property line.
I mean, you're, you're, you're good on kind of all of them.
That's the only.
Even that, even that you can make work. Even that gives you the ten foot radius and then even the fire trucks, I mean, fire trucks are having an issue, but if you've got a curb that's. Four or five inches, you know, four inches high, three inches high as opposed to flush, it's, they're gonna still take it.
Mm hmm.
Make it. So.
We're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good there.
Yeah.
Okay, and so then um, the other uh, item you brought up was elevations and just to re, if we uh, iterate what Thomas said, we're really uh. In the planning commission, um, looking at uh, bulk, like, like height and area and that type of stuff is really where our priority is. I do think it's uh, I do appreciate the fact that you brought the elevation. So if there's anything, it's just an opinion. No, I'll put elsewhere.
Anything else?
Nope.
Oh, can you touch the uh?
I think it's weird how like it. I can see how like, I see. It kind of moved around.
It worked on working sessions. It just. You brought, you brought USB in and a mouse.
Yeah.
Do you remember which one you're plopping?
Um. Mouse or person?
Bill, can I always pull out a press?
Everyone. First I tried it there.
Oh, try it there, huh?
It did work.
Once there.
Can't you just?
And that, once it goes in, it, the mouse is like, like I'm moving my hand.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's weird.
Bill, can you?
Can you do?
Please.
Been touched two minutes times.
You there?
What? Bill, can you open up the USB drive?
Bill, can you do the bathroom?
You know, just to let them know it's part of public record now.
Let's go into the um. Can we talk about, I think to the sales system.
Okay, well, thanks.
Well, we could play.
Maybe you could just subscribe to the computer.
It's not.
Yeah.
He's somebody. He's working on it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Almost.
Thanked him too early.
Yeah. We can't.
He says standby, what file? Which one?
Oh, um, it's the Washington. As the.
So US.
Hello, USB.
USB folder.
Big issue. Sorry, guys.
Now, it's still part of the testing process. There it is.
Okay, perfect. Uh, the address, Washington Street up there.
Two ten, two fourteen, Washington Street, Bill.
Alright. So yeah, zoom so we can see the whole thing. Nice, nice. Okay, next. So I mean, I just presented that and I, all I did is I, I just looked at some of the surrounding buildings. And like I said, zoning doesn't cover this, but just wanted to point out a couple of patterns that you see a lot. You know, the, the typical kind of layout. So these are your neighbors directly, you know, to your right here. And you see um, I'm kind of overweight on top of floor plan here because I know that you're, you're dealing with real rooms. You've got stairs in specific places you've got stored. Now, you also said AI was playing around with it, so I don't know if that was tweaking things. So I kind of made some assumptions about like, okay, we're probably gonna split that room in half. You know, there's neither side, whatever. So um, you know, bigger, smaller. And I was kind of trying to. Follow that, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things like the um, you see this rhythm over and over in Westchester. You got like the two windows up top on these eighteen, sixteen. And then down below, you'll see those windows come a little bit closer together and get paired with the door, right? Um, I think almost always you see the um, stoops as a different material. Sometimes it, even if it is like there's often brick ones. But you'll see those treads as a different material too. And so the elevation you had, again, AI generated. It was all brick, but I just want to point out um. Those two things that start out with, next. And obviously, these are two story. So then if you, you know, go down it, well, this is on the other side, Gay Street, but you know, here are the three story options. And so I pulled, you know. Kind of a typical eighteen foot wide one and then a slightly wider twenty, twenty-two, which those are the sizes they're playing with. And you see that same pattern, right? I see you doing, you know, some group of windows with your neighbors had, you see here. One of the things you see people often do, which I think um, I, I think is a regrettable thing is that, you know, here you have the nice shutter that matches the windows and then you get these paired windows. And then it's kind of like slap a shutter on that doesn't actually match the windows. So my two cents would be if you were to, you know, um. You know, have that paired window, maybe pull the shutters off of that guy as opposed to doing, you know, the two little. Shutter things we have here, but you know, it's just such an elegant, you know, um, facade that we see over and over in town. And um, so, which is my two cents. Um, next. Oh yeah, so I threw this in here. This is um. I have this, I have all these PDFs that University of Penn students did back in the seventies, I think. Of uh, the streets in Philadelphia. And so I just wanted to point out, you know, like all these three story buildings are very similar in their rhythms. You see the two, two, three, two, two, three, two, 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 over and over. You see it, but there's actually. Even with the uniformity, there's a really pleasing um, diversity to these elevations as well. So I just wanted to throw that up there. And then when they draw these. They know what, what's the feature? What's the thing that stands out? And in Westchester and in Philly or any of these borough homes, it's the door. Right? So the windows are usually like window, 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 door. And then your extra, you know, if you're gonna spend the dollars, it's usually not on a bay. It's usually on um. You know, the door. Though sometimes it is the bay too. So um, next is the last one. So I just took that and just kind of like hardline did a little bit, just kind of blackened it and opened it, just kind of, kind of like give you a sense for a rhythm that kind of matched. We don't see that anymore, but there was an underlay behind here where you could kind of see, oh, it's basically following the rhythm that you had. Um, so. Was just my two cents on another way that those windows could be drawn and kind of reflect um. Your neighbors. Can you scroll to the top again? Thanks. So that's, that's my two cents on elevations.
Thank you.
I think uh, you had shown the interior courtyard side as well. There was a light version and a dark version. I don't know if we have that.
It didn't look like it made it online, but I have it here. If you want me to risk plugging it.
Yeah, I think uh, again.
Do we want to do the front and then do the back just because we have those in front of us or?
Yeah.
Sure, if you want more comments being relative to.
Yeah, just if, if there are any.
Good. Alan?
Uh, I think. Thomas's suggestions are excellent. At a minimum, whatever we decide to go with, I would really feel strongly about having. A drawing that shows the entire block. Because the houses that uh, that are to the west of this. Uh. And the ones across the street have, have this sort of strong identity. But I think we would need to see whatever design we wind up with. How it looks in that atmosphere. It isn't, it isn't in an open field somewhere. It's very much. Within the context of a very strong uh. A block with a very strong identity. And um, I. I appreciate what Thomas has done. I think it would be. Big step forward to move in that direction. Casey?
Um, Thomas, thank you for doing that. So I.
So I think, um. To give, uh, Thomas's thing on, on, on a slightly different angle on why to do that. To do this, I don't think there's necessarily anything massively wrong with this, and I know you want to style, but there's nothing necessarily wrong with this. But the one thing that's nice about Thomas's thing, which is the whole archetype of why they did that back then, is because you can keep it really simple, you can keep it, your protrusions, less flashing, well, other, it's just a really simple backdrop, so basically what he's saying is like, make a really nice backdrop and use the rhythm. So it's like, and it's not, it's not about making every house flashy. And so that's the, that's the difference between the two approaches, so. The, the other approach is actually better for you, like Thomas's, but, yeah, so that's, that's what he says, yeah, so, do that.
Matt?
I would not, uh, I don't have any additional comments to what Thomas said and Jason said, they're the architects and I generally concur with their comments, so. We need to talk about two, because you're in Alex's breakfast. I just made one word done, I just, I don't want to like overstep, because I know you all said a comment on that.
Yeah, I agree, I don't think they're anything drastically wrong with this either, I do appreciate Thomas's input, though. About also matching what's there on the street, it's, otherwise it's just gonna stick out like a sore thumb.
Especially that, uh, say, you guys. Yeah, you can be informative, you're the rest of Thomas.
Yeah, I thi- I think, uh, Thomas, you mentioned it before, sometimes you, uh, simplifying things, but then spending the dollars, uh, you can actually afford a better or better quality door. Uh, doors and stoops are really important, because that's really where people engage and touch and, uh, are at eye level with the building, so I think. Uh, I liked that you added banner boxes, I liked that those trees and, and what those stoops are doing, I think the idea potentially then maybe adding some flagstone. Or maybe something that just makes it a little bit, uh, richer there, uh, uh, makes sense to me. But then, maybe it's a richer corners, something, so you save some money somewhere else, but make it something that's more interesting at those other pieces.
I guess one comment I would make, and we talked about it last, and I think it was your intention, uh, was wrapping the brick around the sides on the alleys, um, on Bird's Eye. And the other side, that's not an alley, but, um, I think that will, to Alan's one comment, the neighbors who face their backyards face that, I think that will be. Much more pleasing to the eye, so I, I hope you follow with that.
Was the intent to wrap the ends with brick?
Well, it was showed, well, in, in my defense, it wasn't just a comment that I thought of, it, it was discussed at the last meeting, the way that, that elevation was shown, it was shown as brick. But it would be better.
Black, white, architectural.
Understood, but it was, either way, that's better, I understand it's a cost issue, so I'm just saying, that would be ideal, but again, we don't have, it's not my purview, just a suggestion.
Um, do you have a comment?
Do you want, okay, wanna hear my, uh, well, what I said during the, the presentation last week is, you know, just. For, for us, as we're continuing down this awesome path, which we, we all love, it's about, you know, we, we want to build character and. Bring that character to some of the new buildings and things that we're doing in the, in the borough, we, we don't need to get too prescriptively, when Bernie and I looked at this, when it got blacked up on the screen, do you both agree, it's a little, it's nice, right? So, so, you know, it, it, it's very nice, um.
It doesn't fit.
Well, well, I mean, I wanted to, like, cross my mind when I was driving around. And, you know, character is often built by the differences, not by the samenesses, right? So I think just something we want to keep in mind is that, you know, it doesn't. To, to continue to build upon the character of the borough, it doesn't necessarily all have to look like what was built. Many, many years ago, and as to, like, what you said about, it needs to be sturdy, though, like, we don't want these buildings that are just popping up and that are gonna be run down in twenty years, right? We want stuff that's sturdy and. Cool and, and all those things, so, so keep that in mind as we're talking about this, um, you know, the, the, yes, but, like, what does fit mean and. And does it have to look exactly like all the buildings along the street? I mean, I've given baby honey go for, you know? You know, but, uh, but, but also this looks nice and could also fit into and bring additional character to, to the borough, so that, that's all, I mean, my, my architectural experience.
That'd be important. Yeah, thanks.
That was good, thanks. Yeah, we were actually, uh, struggling with the word replicate versus where's that other word really. Want to be, and if it's sympathetic or, uh, you know, uh, contextually sensitive or whatever it might be, I, I, I agree that. It's a building that's gonna be built in twenty twenty-five, so it's not, it's not seventeen eighty or whatever, so, I'm getting it. Uh, but I do think, uh, um, if, if we could talk about the other sides too, I guess the, uh. Uh, it's, it's turning the corner that's my, uh, would be where that's interesting, I think, do you want to try putting that in there and see if, uh?
Godspeed.
Ready?
Oh, boy.
Okay, last week, that didn't kill the mouse, so.
He's done.
Exterior.
Exterior, I was hit.
Let's scroll down. Bill, can you scroll down to the next image?
So I had this one and a lighter one.
Okay, well, I, I do again appreciate the mandors that are at ground level, and I do appreciate the fact that you're bringing the brick around at that level. Because I think, again, more, uh, sustainable, permanent type of, and durable type of material, I think when we get above it, uh. Maybe it's just the rendering, there was some inconsistency in the lighting, but, uh, just, can you just, uh? Uh, the, are the vertical lights intended to be there or lights down near the doors or we don't know?
No.
Okay. What can you do?
Yeah.
No, I wasn't. Okay.
So. All right, we spent three weeks on that, or my sister along the side, she went on that border. And then back, right, there were two hours before the last week, my sister put it, put it on her, her, and. This is pretty good. I don't think it sounded about fun, color, we're gonna get out of the meeting, so yes, especially with the front elevation, the lights are supposed to be on the doors or on the floor. It's the same thing, it's, this was, I mean, it did it very fast. But we wanted to get the color around rings for the.
Perfect, yeah. So, yeah, we're only proposing, you know, kind of a style, style, like.
Okay.
Each of the mandor, it's what we're proposing. If I could just say, you know, inside the block, right, it's not, like, it's would be. Hard, for example, you know, their purview are the fronts on the public place and things that are, you know, really, um. It depends on how they're interpreting it, but like, sometimes it's like, if it's visible from, but it's really those things that, that have a presence on the public place, so. My two cents would be a back elevation like this, this is really a more place where you could explore and de, you know, differentiate yourself a little bit more from your neighbors, where the front, maybe that's where you. You know, trip it into the rest of the streetscape, this is perhaps where, you know, you experiment a bit, you get a little bit more modern or whatever, so.
Those balconies, how deep were you looking, uh, the ones that are just above the garage, I mean, how, what kind of a? Depth are we looking at there? Are they just cantilevered or they're posts or what's going on with this?
They're, um.
Right.
Yeah, trying to think if I.
I mean, just roughly, was it three feet or was it ten feet or was it like, just giving?
For depth?
Yeah, that.
Oh, I, I think they're more on a four to six foot.
Okay.
Uh. If, if you want to, if.
Where the railings are.
What's that?
Where the railings are with doors. Have a, there's actually a projection, you can step out.
Oh, no, no, these are like recessed back into the, like, like. Uh, wait.
So he's answered.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. So let's go to, oh, got it, can we go, can I just talk a little?
Yeah, you can.
Um, I think the Westchester Downs is the, uh, important league architectural plan, four twenty-five, twenty-five, Westchester Downs.
Bill, one file down?
Uh, so I, I think, yes. I think there might have someone here that gives us some on the depth, if we scroll down, I'm sure we want. Uh, go home. Down to the next to you, so right here, um.
A war.
Ah, okay.
But our. Garage is reset, I should have over that. I don't remember, right, I think the mandor is out here and the garage, the garage is.
No, that's not, that's in the deck, is it over the garage?
Like, the garage is four or five feet back, I believe.
I think, I like, I like the.
Yeah, that's.
Two sets in the garage. Well, I guess, I guess.
Might be, if you go, we might have another side, we can do, show that better, hold on. Go down to the next page.
Minutes.
Bill.
There you go.
It's fucking quick.
Uh. Let's, let's check out five. Good action five. Uh, so here, and this is. That's the balcony. The garage is marked, it's all the way back. It's like halfway back down.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right here. See.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the first floor is kind of cantilevered over a little bit.
Yeah, that, that helps, I think.
And this is, this was preliminary, obviously, this is.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, uh. You know, there, from a color option, I mean, it's just. Purely, uh, opinion, I think that where it gets funny is turning corners and then, uh, so, and I'm saying there's not a right or a wrong to it. If you're a similar tone to the brick, it seems a little more solid, if you're a little more contrasting, like the, the light, it just has a little more of a, a plane as opposed to a volume. Uh, and also, it starts to tend to read like there's a horizontal base, a horizontal middle, and in that corner, so, it's, it just reads slightly different, I do, uh. I like the dark one myself, but I mean, it's, uh, it's a little more modern, but I think, um. I'm not sure, there's not a wrong, I think they're both well-done. Casey, Penny?
I'm gonna withhold comment.
Sure, fair enough.
Sounds are perfect.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
That's it.
I think at some point we, it's not our purview.
Yeah, I just think it's, uh, I think it's nicely done, I think when you're in the back there, I think I would just be aware of the scale of that courtyard. And the neighbors and who's living in that space, I think, uh, I think. It's fair enough there that the one is more consistent with the front than the other, but, uh, and depends on how you turn the corner, more importantly than the color. I think, uh, over time, who knows where that'll go. But, uh, and I think it's, I think that overall part is very, very well done, very nice. So. Uh, anybody else have anything, any other comments relative to this? I know we didn't help you or your sister output, I mean, uh.
So that side, you could scroll back up a little bit, Bill. For the side view, that's gonna be regular, that's gonna be regular. Cause that's, you see, yeah, that's nice.
And I think that helps turn that corner and makes that building feel solid.
And I agree with, um. You can do a little bit more in the middle there, a little bit more, um, I mean, you can do more. I mean. We talk about the front. Pitting with the rest of the neighborhood, that they can see it as a place to make it a little more modern, I wonder if you want to do it.
Yeah, that's true.
I really appreciate. Owners, everyone's responsiveness to all our comments throughout this, um, this whole process, because probably these guys have been, been very responsive and. Really. Did a great job. A little bit late.
Mm hmm.
I live around the corner.
Oh, yeah.
When you announced this for sale, I'm.
You're gonna get some phone calls and some emails, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, I'll, I can make a motion.
Yep, please.
Can I just ask one, one other, I'm really curious as to. The reason for the peak roof. I, I don't really understand internally what they accomplished, it's certainly foreign to the rest of the neighborhood, they're almost all flat roof. Buildings there. What does that, does it give you an attic, does it give you, uh? High ceiling on the, on the master bedroom or what is it, uh?
Not at all.
I'm sorry?
Not at all. With my thing, those stars, I'm sure they're on. Very.
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
So it was matching what was around the hair.
Oh.
Um, there definitely, to, to the, to the right, where we were just, where I was showing precedent, those are, you know, uh, nothing's actually true, but, but I would say that generally in the borough, we do have pitch roofs, and pitch roofs are gonna be the most. Durable, I think the key thing is gonna be, you know, giving like a nice little like cornice line and you don't actually see it, you know, most of our. You know, if you look out, almost all of our borough fabric is pitched, but it's a low pitch, kind of like this, and when you're, when you're gonna be anywhere on Washington Street, you won't actually be able to see it. Because that pitch is well enough, so you see an elevation, you actually don't see it in reality. If we're steeper, you know, than maybe a gorilla, it's, you don't.
All right. Sure, I can give it a shot. Um. I would move to recommend approval of the plan with the following conditions. One, include a waiver for, from the requirement for streetlights, or install streetlights on Washington and Patton per the code. Two, reduce the, reduce the curb radius at Patton and Bird's Eye to ten feet with a mountable curb. Which prioritizes pedestrian safety as consistent with other alley curb radii in the borough and still accommodates fire trucks and firefighting capabilities. And then three, resolving all remaining consultant comments.
Second. Any public comment? Gonna pause it, Alan?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, unanimous.
All right, um, I would like to, uh, yeah, and this, uh, I would also make, uh, propose another motion. If streetlights are in, well, I would like to move that we recommend to Borough Council to consider removing the Cobra Lights. On Washington and Patton. And work it, and, and then. Requiring, I, I'm not sure how to word it, if, if streetlights are installed, removing the Cobra Lights on Patton and Washington, I'd like to get that discussion. Uh, or put that in front of them, so I think that's another, a second motion, however we want to work it.
Maybe it's a move.
Is it a note in the letter to Borough Council, uh, you know, well, if we all agree on that approach, then maybe we move and vote, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we, I don't know if that's gonna be part of a bigger conversation, uh, maybe separate it just so it's very clear that it's a whole separate issue. Uh, and it's not attached to this, uh.
Yeah, yeah, I don't hold it up, hold anything up.
So I, I'll, I'll agree with your making an, an additional motion or.
Okay, move to recommend Borough Council consider. How to. Uh, reduce the number of Cobra Lights or. Uh, start the process of removing Cobra Lights throughout the borough where. Possible, where feasible, something to that extent, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I know that the discussions taking place about dark skies, uh, they've had presentations, uh, uh, from Tim about the. Uh, uh, warmer light levels and more consistently warm, uh, and so I think all of that kind of fits together. Uh, and it's a really, still at the same time, make sure we're maintaining, um, uh, a safe light level. And, and a light level that, that feels, uh, and maintains a level of safety at, for the pedestrians.
Typically, I think that, um. Those studies show that the existing Cobra Lights are too bright, so often you're looking at like four or five times the lumens. That are actually best suited to your eyes at night, so it's actually kind of glaring or blinding. So, I. I agree with you, I think that, I guess it is part of this bigger conversation, because we're already overriding that area, probably, we're gonna override, you know. Bring even more light to the night sky, so it does, maybe deter this bigger conversation in general.
So I'll second that.
I'll, I'll, I'll clarify, so let's say, move to recommend the borough, consider where, how to remove existing Cobra Lights in the borough where feasible and where safe light levels can be maintained with streetlights. Does that make sense?
Do you want this to be specific to this street because they're putting in other lights or, it's very general?
It is, I, I think the, cause it's a larger conversation. It is, I, I think the, cause it's a larger conversation.
Did you, could you reread it? I think I have one.
I, I didn't wanna make it specific to this project for the reasons that I don't wanna hold up the process for that.
But they could get approvals to them forward and we could just be on our side, hey, let's look at this site. Maybe it's a good place to start because then.
Direction on those lighting.
And anywhere there's, um, any, anywhere that the Saudi lights is called. Our, our kind of institute or installed, they should be replaced or.
Yeah.
The, the Cobra light should be taken away. So it's a, it's a replacement, it's not, it's not. Yeah, we want sultry light.
But particulars, I think it would be valuable, right? Like, I do, I think the particular rotation, then like if it's applicable, then we can expand that.
Okay.
They changed it.
So it's moved to recommend the borough remove existing Cobra lights across the street on Washington, at the corner of Washington and Patton and along Patton.
As long as, like.
If streetlights are installed as part of.
And, and, and that's the appropriate thing, as long as we're not lowering light too far, right?
Right, and safe light levels can be maintained.
Maintain, yeah.
All right.
Really nice job.
Just start with Tom, for the lights. Figuring out the next, like, I mean, we wanna figure it out.
Sure.
And Tom's probably the first, first.
How committed you're talking. Yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, I think you can start with, with that competition with him and see what he'll support. I was in the place, Mike, thank you very much, really nice job, really nice, looking forward to seeing these buildings going up, we'll be watching.
Yeah.
Do we wanna seconds and vote on that?
All right, I'll. Thank you very much. So you'll look for us winding around your, uh, progress later on.
Two comments Bill has made to me over in sitting here, there's apparently another keyboard and mouse.
Thank you.
That, that should work.
It should say public on them.
Is your pump drive still in?
It's not, I, it's not working period, so.
In that mouse.
Maybe we should try this before our next meeting. But yes, good, thank you.
Okay, we'll get that. All right, I'm gonna second Matt's motion, if you wonder, uh, any comments on that after? Alan?
Hey, any comments or a vote?
Well, if you have comments, we'll take.
I don't have any comments.
Uh, would you like to vote?
Fair enough, yes.
Excellent. Jason?
No comments, yes.
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 Yeah.
No comments, yes. All right. Okay, seven hundred South High Street, which is West Chester University, uh, the master plan.
Nobody here?
Yeah, I, I can hear you. Fifteen year master plan, so the, the plan breaks it down between zero, five, five, ten, ten, fifteen, and kind of projects out. Um, I think, uh, I'm consistent with Alan's, uh, view that I really appreciate the fact that the university has. Uh, submitted something to us and then really doesn't address a specific project yet. It doesn't identify one, I mean, it certainly does a, a zero to five year and we can kind of see what they're doing as how they're planning out some of the improvements in the housing. Um, I think, uh, I would certainly love a conversation from either the applicant or the applicant's attorney. Somebody that would come in, then kind of give an executive summary, or if, if there was anything that they would find to, um. Any, any opinions or, uh, recommendations from us. I think what's important to me is everywhere where the, uh, Westchester University campus touches the borough. Where that interaction takes place and how it impacts residents of the borough. I think, um, so that, that perimeter tree line made sense. Any potential, uh, seedings or groups or, uh, parker parks or anything that's adjacent to, uh. Uh, I'll just say more about the borough residents, uh, I do think it's important that we, uh, understand it. I do think there's a significant, uh, uh, impact to, uh, the pedestrian pass, especially if, if church goes away. Uh, where then, uh, right now, I, the master plan really does not address, um. In any great way, Rosedale and High, that intersection. I heard Matt's comments relative to the parking, I think those two parking garages charge, there's a fee associated with both those. I think if it was a dollar and I was a student, I'd go find the free parking spots. So I, I can certainly understand why, though, though drive around and find the, uh, free parking down on South Matlack and walk across Rosedale High. So, I, I certainly understand why there might be spots available there, it costs, it costs money. So I think, I think there's the, um, um, once Sykes gets the addition on that as a student center. Once, uh, church goes away, uh, if it does go away, um, and certainly it looks like there's. That road's gonna have to come in at least as far as that new parking garage, uh, which is just in front of the People's Building or across from Mitchell Hall. So that'll end up with that, uh, cul-de-sac for a turnaround. So that really, if anything, removes that south end of church, which is, uh, quite frankly, just, it's really embedded in, in the campus. So it's really a student, uh, uh, place that's full of lunch carts. And I'm not sure which ones first, getting rid of the lunch carts of the students, but it's once that becomes more of a pedestrian way. That's gonna funnel the students down towards Sykes crossing mid-block. So I wanna see how that's addressed as opposed to, they're no longer on those corners, but now if they're, if that circulation pass coming in the center of the block. That's again, another spot coming down Rosedale where, uh, that, uh, that interaction between residents and, and students. Place, again, personally, I think, uh, anybody that crosses, uh, borough lines ought to understand it's a pedestrian town. It's, the pedestrians have a right of way, uh, the bikes, the students, uh, uh, the dogs, whatever it might be, that they have, they have, uh, the right of way. So, if individuals wanna go faster, should go around the borough, should take one of the bypasses, they should be that or put their patience hat on when they come in. So I think the bulk of, uh, of what we can say at this point, I mean, there's bigger picture items and, uh, I'm not sure. Like say, for instance, that northeast corner to create the super block, a long sharp listen high. That's so far out on their schedule, I'm not even sure, uh, and not sure what the intended, so I don't know how we even comment on it.
It's, it's hard because it's, it depends on the people that own the properties, like there's nothing to be, to say they can't buy this property.
Sure. Yeah, and then, and not even understanding what the plan for that is. Uh, so, I mean, i- is it to keep them, restore them? I don't know, if they're, if they're there to restore historically renovated and perfect, but I mean, I, I don't know what the plan is. Uh, but, so I think, uh, like Jason had mentioned, what happens inside the campus relative to the academic buildings and so. It's really university stuff and I think it's, it's, it's certainly, uh, uh, they need to kind of, uh, adjust their own needs. I think there are, I think they are improving with both Heritage and, uh, Lawrence, those living conditions as well as creating some new green. So I think that's, that's a, um, good direction. That's really where our borough is, the top corner, the, uh, I mean, that upper right, the Rosedale, the Sykes. Uh, and then again, New, New Street's kind of been neglected, it kind of turns in the back house with a, a piece there. Um, so, I just wanna remember that, that street is also a, uh, a, a major way in and out of borough. I'm not sure what they're planning on the south corner of, I guess, Rosedale and New, with the tennis courts now, maybe they're.
Outdoor recreational improvements.
Changing them to pickleball then? I'm not sure what that.
No, I don't think they're gonna be parking anymore, I think it's gonna be something else.
So, uh, Jason?
My, my, my one comment I said about the church treaty, I just think, I just think people should be aware of this so that people can comment more than us. Um, but, um, the, the one thing that since we have some Borough Council members here. Um, and we're looking at the map, right here, kind of part of this master plan, but not really. There's a new turn on that sign right there, it's gotta go. That's it. That's it. Where the park, so. So all, all traffic coming down church is gonna go this way or that way, there's a light here to take care of that. I wouldn't be surprised if in five or ten years there's a light here, but, so when you turn, but when you come down Neil Street and you stop at this dead end.
You can't.
You make a right. You can't make a right until the green light, which you might say, oh, big deal, but especially like now with school out, you just sit there. So if there's no cops around, I go. The thing I find is something kind of interesting is ironically, it creates a worse condition for people coming out of the building, out of the garage. Because then they have to turn, the car has to go on green, the people are crossing on green, so now the cars are now deliberately. The traffic, so if, if somebody. And then somebody crosses on green, there's no, there's, that means, there's no overlap of people and cars, so it's interesting, but.
Sure.
It's just bad thing. But, um, just people should know about that.
Sure.
This whole thing so that they can comment at Borough Council, not, not really here.
Okay. Alan?
Not gonna have any presentation from the university at all, that's.
I'm sorry?
I don't believe that's accurate, I thought that Ramsey before being on Talking to Brian.
Okay. Well, I mean, if I understand it. If I understand it right, they've extended till August, which means we have until July twenty ninth to render a decision on this. So we have a little.
Yeah.
Time, uh, and I do think it would be very good for the university, I think university's done a really good job here. And, uh, I, I wanna, I think some dialogue would be appropriate. I think we have some, all have some questions about it, but, um. You know, I think we have to, I, I, I look at this from the standpoint, just sort of going back to when we were having this awful experience with the university. As they were escalating the enrollment and, uh, it, not student housing in any way, shape or form. Putting more pressure on the borough to absorb all of those, um, students. So, uh, it, it, the numbers here lead you to say, this is great news. They are pretty much gonna stay at the current level in terms of enrollment. And so, that takes an enormous amount of pressure off of everything. I do, I am concerned about losing two hundred parking places by the closing of Church Street, it's not, nothing, you know? And it sort of forces you into buying into their rationale that. Uh, if we build more, eight hundred and ninety more, uh, housing units on campus. Therefore, there will be fewer cars. And I don't know anybody who's gone to college and has lived in a dormitory, said, oh, now I don't need a car. I think that's an interesting line of thought, but the numbers favor that logic, I think. In terms of, it's not extreme, it's not a one for one. Um, I agree with you on Rosedale and High, it's always been something that I've crossed with my, part of my mouth. That some attention should be paid to it. Um, but in total, you're very lucky that you didn't live through the bad, the bad years. When we were all scared to death that suddenly there're gonna be thirty-five thousand students on that campus. And, you know, that it's gonna be very disastrous for, for the borough. Uh, and so this is great news and I had, there's a lot of people who did a lot of work to get this. And I think the other thing you should keep in mind is, um, this is not anything that the university wanted. They, the municipalities were so, West Coast and, and the borough were so fed up with this, with their. The way they were conducting themselves, I guess I just have to say that, you know? And secretive and not really in any way seeing the partnership that we're sharing, Westchester, together, you know? But so to have come to this point, it's almost like they dreamed it five years ago and here it is in, in reality. And it's, I think it's pretty great, so.
Agreed. Because that's that line where.
That was good to see.
It was. I think that's that line where, yeah, we, we got, remember we're not a college town, we're a town that has a college in it. So we're, we're Westchester Borough, we also have the county here, we also have the, the university here, so.
We were becoming, we were becoming. Yeah, a, a college that had a town in it.
But that's.
That's, that's where we were going.
Yeah, well, this last week is significantly quieter.
Yeah, but, um, I don't know if I can show you this. Okay, so this is where we're charting it, here's the population of through overtime, here's the population of Westchester. Here's the population of Westchester University, the enrollment. Couple of years away from being more of a college than a town.
What's the, what are the years for lunch in the right?
Uh, well, this traced back to when, as soon as we could get any numbers, you know? So, um. Westchester University went back to nineteen ninety-three, there were eleven thousand students, today there's seventeen thousand students, okay? So, you know, eighty percent increase, something, I don't know, sixty, something like that. Westchester, uh, from two thousand, just from two thousand, there were seventeen thousand. Yeah, so anyway.
I don't have any comments that could be answered here, so, uh, we'll ask when we get that presentation.
Alex is a alum, as an alum of Westchester.
Yeah, you know, it's all something.
Sure. They won't take back your degree, you're okay.
Yeah, and we talked about it like a week ago, um, I, the only thing I would add is that Patrick, um, you know, Borough Council member from my ward. Um, meets with them regularly along with some of his other colleagues and he said that they've got a great working relationship and he's gonna work to, to getting us all together. For a presentation, so like Matt and Alex and, so, no comments, I'm looking forward to hearing more about it, so.
Yep, very good. All right, any other? Any other business? Any yes? I gotta move to, uh.
Seconded.
Ed Turner. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Be great if you blink or show up or something.
Yeah, well, before we start next time, I'll try the new mouse and keyboard because, uh.
He, he might color code them differently.
Okay.
They're, they are color coded. He can color code them.
I'll try to.
Okay. Well, that would be something if he could, while he's at in.
Yeah.
In, in-house here, that he can try it out and then. And then the other thing is, is maybe we can locate one of these, uh.
One said staff, the others was public.
Oh, so the staff.
We bet him, he was gone the next.
Don't know, the staff wasn't working.
Really mistake, Jason.
At least as far as.
But I don't answer questions.
Thank you, Matt.
Uh, yeah, thank yous.
Hey, Jason.
I'll get you this.
I'm just gonna go right back.
Batteries.
What's that?
I'm gonna get right back here for review, so. Thank you. So, Jason, another red light?
No, we go red.
But the thing is. Nice, I love it.
Not to pride.
How was this?
Good.
So as for that.